Montgomery Economic Development Corporation. And present we have Carol Lanely, Arnett Easley, Dan Walker, Wayne Nelson, Ryan Lundin, and Casey Olson, and myself, Jeff Angelo. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. So, I turn towards the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God and indivisible. I'll give it right one day. I'm gonna memorize that. That's not too long. I wish to be an actor.
You have your own way.
All right, so we're going to open up our public forum. The Montgomery Economic Development Corporation will receive comments from the public on any matters within the jurisdiction of the MEDC. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Persons wishing to participate during the public forum portion of the meeting by signing to participate. We have someone here today, Mr. TJ Wilkerson. Please note that MEDC's discussion, if any, on subjects for which the public notice has not been given, are limited to statements of specific factual responses and recitation of existing policy. So, without further ado, Mr. TJ Wilkerson.
Good evening. This is the Montgomery County Board here to thank TJ Wilkerson, our local Montgomery Board of Cemetery. Our cemetery is located 15 hours from five hours in that cemetery in Montgomery. And I'm here to put a bill to put in the court for the march saying that we're here going to ask for assistance in our plumbing. We come five days today that we're gonna have to go up under the road to get to the water line where we had the mission from the church on the corner. They need to tie in there for the needed water line. But I tend to tell us if you want to bid for us to go under the road. So, we want to let you know that we'll be coming back once it's found. Know what it's gonna cost to do that and maybe ask for your assistance. The cemetery is not just anything. It's just a historical mark. It's a historic state. And we bring a lot of businesses come in and they visit. Another fact, a couple of years ago, we had the Navajo tribe, I think, the Indians that came down through Chevron and taken property. They went to visit a black cemetery in Texas. Some of the children, that one, that came out and there's a cookhouse in there. We got a fifty if they paint the fence. And they tried, but we printed a lot of businesses there. We're part of that business of the past and they go around with children, go around every year, seventh grade, and they do a...
Seventh grade project?
Yeah, a project on that. And what we're doing, I got the doctor, what the building look like. It's sitting there now, but I had hiatus on it after I had my heart attack. And so, I kind of let it drop for a while. But now, doctor says we can pick back up if we want to. There's not a facility that's going to be open every day or every weekend. It's just gonna be open mainly during festivals, on holidays, Mother's Day, Father's Day, that type of thing, better than today. And we're gonna also have a lot of police department and they own the outside town, they have a team, so that they might run back uptown or something like that. So, we're gonna be asking for your assistance right now. We have estimate cost sixty-five hundred dollars. Two of the plums that I talked to, talking one, not long ago, and he said maybe the city tapped the line and then they're finished up. They would be on the north side of Chinatown. Surers on the south side, so that's the problem. The problem is we couldn't help running under the road. And we're gonna probably come back after we finalize everything and finalize to the city what they really want and make it a historical site. It's part of the thing to recruit people from all around to come to the cemetery and especially to add value to the city. Because we plan on beautifying more scouts working with us here in Montgomery and a lot of historical societies around working with us on it. And we want to put a bathroom in the cemetery. And that was the best thing for coming. The building, the donation of the gazebo, we've done by the Lutheran Church, they've made the gazebo too. So, we trying to beautify the cemetery. And we're gonna be asking for your assistance on that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Any other discussion question for Mr. Wilkerson? Yes, no? Okay. All right, then. Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. We'll move on to our regular agenda. Consideration and possible action on the regular meeting minutes for May twentieth, 2025. Are there any comments regarding those minutes, the consideration, possible action, or we want to accept them as they are?
I make a motion to accept item number three as presented.
So, Casey has made a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of May twentieth, 2025, and it's been seconded by Ryan Lundin. It's up for discussion. It's amendable, debatable, but requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We will accept the regular meeting minutes for May twentieth, 2025. Just a second to get past that. All right. All right, next on our agenda is item number four, an update on the ICSC event. I want to make note that Ms. Stephanie Johnson is not here. She's not present today. She had to step out for a personal emergency of some sort, so I'm gonna give a quick update. We did, most of us that were here last night did receive an update on pretty much what we're looking at here, which was the fact that she met with many, many, many people during her time there at ICSC. There was over thirty thousand participants. These are all retail-related businesses and developers. And it looks like that she was able to do some fairly robust connections, I will say. I think she's got, she said, her takeaways were that despite the challenges of terrorists and interest rate volatility, the leasing activity seems to be remaining strong. There's a serious interest in Montgomery. According to the mayor, we've had over twenty-six, I believe she said, developers in retail as both national and local interested in expanding the Montgomery area. There seems to be a big focus on redevelopment, especially mall and other... That brings you, makes your heart happy?
No, I forgot something.
Oh, you forgot something? Okay, we'll come back to you just a bit. We got, we'll give you another update. Okay, so redevelopment, especially for empty shelf spaces, seems to be a big focus on that. And then there's a big, big emphasis on experiential retail. I've been hearing that over and over again. And she found that that is something that is particularly something that the Gen Z and the millennials, Gen Z and millennials are very, very focused on experiential type entertainment venue, pickle and chicken and pickle and these kinds of things. So, she focused a lot on the entertainment aspect and seems to have had some positive results as well there. She also mentioned that the integration of technology and AI is playing a significant role. Companies are leveraging artificial intelligence for location intelligence, predictive modeling, enhancing customer experiences and so on. And she attended a community connection event with Kendra Scott, you know, who owns the incredible brand, Kendra Scott brand. And she emphasized the appointment, the importance of creating retail spaces that foster community and connection. And it seems to align with the broader industry trend, prioritizing people first, cultures and customer engagement. So, does anybody have anything they need to add to that? There's no motion or anything? We just giving you an update. And we got a lot of this yesterday, so we're okay with that, everybody? Okay, all right. All right, well, then we'll move on to the next item. The next item is similar, but it's update on the community events. These are events, and I'm not gonna go through every single one of them, let's just say they all went well. Monty's Well, even though the weather on Friday was a little bit suspect, the rest of weekend was absolutely beautiful. Grace Point was a venue that offered an upscale and welcoming environment. It elevated the entire event because it made it feel like a social event. They had a band there. They had a thing called Monty's Well, where they had logoed cups and it was just a, I could hear the music from my, from my property, and it was just fantastic. You could see the people were engaged. It was a highly successful event. We're talking about the Antiques Festival. And the estimated total cost was just under five thousand dollars. They're still waiting on the, on the final, but the bar sales goal was achieved. The custom branded goat cups, G-O-A-T goat cups, added a touch and a fun and the marketing value, and it served as mementos. And especially, it was all over the social media with, just the cups themselves were a huge hit. So, the next steps, a department meeting is gonna be scheduled to debrief and evaluate on the antique festival. We should be hearing from Kendra on that. And the conclusion was, despite a rainy start, Monty's Well proved to be a vibrant addition to Montgomery's event calendar. And it's something we haven't done for the last few years, so it was good to see it back. Saturday's success was highlighted with the enthusiasm for sophistication, yet all of the accessible gatherings, we loaned out some parking lot. Our parking lot was full all weekend long. It was just a, it was a highly successful event, and I think more of those outcomes are going to be expected with our superstar Ms. Stephanie. She is quite remarkable. Finally, their own star street dance had some heat issues. Of course, it's that time of year, but it still had a phenomenal turnout and continues to be one of the more popular small-town feel events that everybody seems to want to go to. So, that's the update on the community events. Anybody need, have any questions? I'll try to answer if you know. Okay. Wow, you guys got locked jaw today. All right. All right, so we'll jump on to the next, let me read this real quick. This is going to be item number six on the agenda. This is an update on the downtown streetscapes project, and WGA is going, is represented here by...
Oh, this is Zachary Tinsley, working with the WGA as a senior here. This is providing all the information.
Thanks, Zach.
So, after our last meeting, we wanted to finalize the layout with our director, Kim Lee Moore on the downtown street scale, with the all understanding that the council will be at North Towne only and would not be accessing through the property owner, State House, or a through access to the Prairie Street. After that meeting, after the MEDC meeting last month, we received correspondence from the mayor, with additional force partners from the property owner stating that he would be amendable to at least partial access to his property, not a through to Prairie, but for event parking only. I believe this conversation's come up previously, but it's going to turn the head as to his desire to be involved with the project. So, now we're trying to finalize the layout and potential costs associated with that repaving project. He is asking that a part of this project, if we were to grant, if we were to be granted an evening to access this parking lot and events only, that we repay his property. So, now we're trying to finalize the scope and cost of that, and included would be layout at our direction. So, as a reminder, the project is for our director, Kim Lee Moore, repaving and drainage improvements related to McCollum Street, which again will be one out only with some access to the property owner. And then WGA's portion will be the water line and drainage improvements outside of that. And so, now adding in, excuse me, adding in the repaving cost for the parking lot, that is one of the costs for the authority to finalize the whole project cost.
Are you doing the entire parking lot or just what he's allowing us to utilize?
I have not been through those conversations, so we'll have to have a follow-up with the property owner to make sure what...
Yeah, that would have to be asked.
...the scope is.
Yeah.
But from my understanding, it would be just the portion that would be accessed for the property, so just that northern portion of the parking lot. But again, following up with that. So, next steps outside of finalizing the cost and layout would be, again, coordinating with the property owners for a raised deck that would be located on the west side of McCollum Street, for access and easement, maintenance, et cetera. And then again, finalizing the easement and fragmentation for access to the parking lot if it is not being included.
Zach, do we have any timelines for completing this thing? I mean, I know we talked a little bit about it last time, but can you give us at least a boilerplate ballpark?
Yeah, so the design of McCollum Street portion, again, Kim Lee Moore and our directors seems to be complete. They've already provided their cost for their portion of our work improvements. We've done some wondering, remember the town and downtown water line improvements project has already been designed, but we've modified our scope to match what's being proposed with our direction. So, again, that would just be upsizing and replacing the water line on McCollum Street or portion, from the existing four and six inch to an eight inch. And then the drainage improvements also pretty much done as well. We did a downtown actually, a few years back from next scope, hasn't changed all that much. So, now it's just adding in a portion of parking lot repayment. And again, once we confirm what his intentions or thought of what would be repaid, we can finalize that as well. And so, again, to my understanding, previously, the downtown property owner had expressed an interest in not doing this during the summer, i.e. when they're busy. So, ideally, we would finalize the scope in the fall and if we did, construct it December, January, early June.
Perfect, okay.
But again, those timelines are subject to check based on additional information.
Okay, well, there's not much more together. It sounds like we're getting to the short hairs. I know this isn't an agenda item, but I'm just, Ruby, correct me if I'm wrong, can we ask, since he's here, about the wayfinding signs to see if there's been any improvement?
No, because that's not on my...
Okay, so we'll save that then for, maybe for our next meeting then.
Just to be clear, WGA wasn't involved with the...
Right.
They were or were not?
Were not.
Were not.
No.
Really?
No.
Exactly.
Okay, well, we won't be needing to ask you that anymore then. Sorry, Zach.
I do have a note to make about any kind of agreement. Ruby, can we put it in notes to, the next time Talon is in town, that we have him investigate what that legal agreement would look like to give us lifetime access to that parking lot, even if the property sells? Because we play this game once we...
Yeah, that's good.
...our downtown people, and it has chains around it, even though we paid for that parking lot. So, we definitely want to capture that in a legal agreement that sticks to that property forever.
How does, how does the access work for just events? Like, how do you limit that? Is it...
That all is in the agreement as well, because it isn't design related at all. I imagine there would be a shared calendar between the city and the property owner, and then I guess agreements would be made as to whether it would be accessible or not. But I think they'll have to work on it and whatever they'll agree on, access to the documentation that the property owner...
Okay. This seems kind of odd to only have it open for events, because he's gonna need it open during events for his customers, so I don't know.
I'm thinking he's thinking next time when he's closed, we'll have the events downtown probably.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're redoing the parking lot, that it's cohesive. It's not a whole lot additional pavement in front of his restaurant. I don't know. I just like to see that layout of what we're agreeing to, limits of paving.
For sure. So, yeah, the goal for me would be to present that to all of the next ones.
Maybe defining the scope, would it just be an overlay? Are we taking up and putting new pavement down?
I'm not, again, not knowing the condition of the existing parking lot, so that would be considered in our cost assessment.
It's in very bad shape.
It probably needs to be removed.
It sits down to base.
Yeah. And it needs to be cohesive with the other improvements we're doing.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's it, Zach. Thank you very much for giving us an update. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven. This is a consideration and possible action on the setting of the meeting time for the MEDC budget workshop. It's scheduled for Wednesday, July ninth. Are there any, is there any particular time that works for everybody?
Six o'clock. What was, what's wrong with that?
Six, six, six.
I don't have a problem doing the six o'clock, but Stephanie sent out an email indicating that she was gonna leave the time open. When I questioned her about it, she had said, well, it's Wednesday night, it's church night, we may be interfering with church. So, that left it open, and I didn't want to overlap on someone because I wasn't part of the discussion when this came up.
I remember.
So, I brought it forward to find out what, what's the board's consensus.
Arnett, is that okay with you?
Wednesday?
Wednesday at six? Okay. On July ninth? Yeah, a lot of churches, you know, their youth programs and things like that go away during the summertime.
We're out.
Yeah, we're out. Yeah, okay. So, if everybody's okay with Wednesday, the ninth at six o'clock, then that's what we'll pigeonhole it for a budget workshop.
Yep.
About you? Okay.
So, we need to make a motion on this?
Yes, yes.
I do think we need to make a motion, yes. So, we'll, we'll open that up.
I'll make a motion to set the July ninth MEDC budget workshop for six o'clock.
Take it. It's been motioned that we accept the MEDC budget workshop scheduled for July ninth, 2025, for six P.M. and seconded by Arnett, motioned by Casey. It's amendable, it's open for discussion? Okay, debatable? No? Okay, so we do require a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries that we will set the meeting for six P.M., July ninth, 2025, for the MEDC budget workshop. All right, so we are going to move to a closed session. Montgomery Economic Development Corporation will meet in a closed session pursuant...
Can you let Mr....
Oh, Mr. Wilkerson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, before...
Yes, I'm sorry. I left it out. What I did in the research, in that cemetery, I took a paper to Austin, and when the cemetery is older than the town, it came back May tenth, eighteen thirty-one, that the cemetery was there, and it was a country between the colored cemetery and the land of home. They sent me back the report in Spanish, and I couldn't read it. And they told me if I weren't to interpret it, send them eight dollars. So, I sent them eight dollars back in September, twenty twenty, and then they sent me a report of what it was, and it had five other people in Texas, I mean, in the country that was dividing the land in Texas, about, you know, before Civil War, they were dividing the property, and it was five people. John Cornyn, who wanted that, that, that answer, they divided the property and it showed that the cemetery was there way before the town of Montgomery.
I'll be darned.
And the plantation was in that area. And so, it's historical to know, and so whenever we are, I'm trying to add to the history of Montgomery, that it's showing, I live here, it comes from the general landlord and...
That's remarkable.
So, I did some research on it, and we got a paperwork, everything's reported.
Well, thank, thank...
It's five of these problems. They all have to say that the town was sold for, we never know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilkerson.
Thank you.
And not, not just that, thank you for all you did for the city. You're, you're really a pillar of our community. We appreciate you a lot. You've served so many different ways, it's unreal. You and Arnett should start a serving camp. I know, it's amazing.
Yeah. Well, our, our vision as MLK and Montgomery County United is to add beautification to the city as a whole. You say, why in heck you need a bathroom in a cemetery? Well, you know, just say, that's one of the historical aspects of Montgomery. Them, they've got a bathroom and cemetery.
Right.
But I, I...
We have to do a tree to see my...
I digress, but what I'm saying is that, you know, any, any time we can enhance our community, whatever it is, we have to do it. If we can be a small part of that, we have to do it. And I think so many times, we're not talking about it all the time, sometimes the city handcuffs progress...
Right.
...instead of promoting it and appreciating it.
Right.
You know, so...
Yeah, we love, we love it. We'll, we'll do what we can to keep, preserve the history. That's what this is all about.
Sure, yeah.
All right, so we are going to move to closed session. I need to read this real quick, and then I would like to invite Ms. Bevins to join us, since she's got some good information to help us along. Item number eight, we're going to move to closed session. The Montgomery Economic Development Corporation will meet in a closed session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five, five, one of Texas Government Code, and according with the authority contained in section five, five, one, point zero, seven, two, deliberations about real property for potential purchase of the land. We'll go into closed session at six twenty-five, and we'll be back. We'll go into closed session at 6:25 and we'll be back. 6:25 and we'll be back.
Okay, here we go.
All right, it, uh, okay, it, you're watching.
Six forty.
Yeah, six forty-two, three-ish. One more in there. Um, we're back in, in session. And Montgomery Economic Development Corporation has reconvened, opened session. Um, and the matters of real property for potential purchase has been discussed. And so, I believe we have a motion?
Yes, one second. I have to write it down.
Okay, that's fine. So, it's been motioned and seconded that we authorize the city administrator to, uh, to discuss the potential purchase of...
Real property.
Real property for the city of Montgomery, for Montgomery, on behalf of the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation. Uh, this, uh, this motion is amendable, debatable, requires a majority of vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes carry it and we will be looking forward to our new city administrator discussing this with us perhaps at our next meeting. Okay, now we are going to move on to item number 10. These are items to consider for placement on future agendas. May I go first? Okay. Um, I would like to look at a budget amendment to purchase six new laptops for the, the board. Casey has opted out saying he's fine with what he has, but Carol, Arnett, Dan, myself, Wade, and Ryan all are in need of devices since we have none. And so, we want to make sure that we, we, we get that taken care of. So, I would like to, uh, look at authorizing an expense not to exceed $7,000 and, um, just have that put on the next meeting for discussion and perhaps, I don't know if there, is there an expense to, uh, to getting them set up through our IT group that handles? Are they on retainer? Little bit of expense involved, maybe? Should we ask for a little more then? What, what's a little? Is it like four, 500 total or, we don't know?
I can find out.
Okay. All right, so whatever that number, if it, if it looks like we need to pad, this is the cost for the hardware. If there needs to be some software setup, then we'd like to include that in, in the number as well.
Can you just give us a number, like pick out the devices and give us a number of setup that costs us and then we'll just vote on that?
Okay, yeah. Uh, the second, the second thing is I'd like to get a, um, an update on our wayfinding signs and I, from Ms. Stili or whoever is responsible for that, um, for our next meeting.
I talked to her a couple of weeks ago. We're still waiting on text talk.
Still waiting on text talk? Okay.
I have to get an update at the next meeting. It'll be a month from now.
Yeah, maybe we'll have a, an update by then.
She usually shows up anyway.
Well, then it was text talk today. I'm not, I'm not meeting with councilman.
Oh, councilman.
I've asked Stili, if we can, to bring that up whenever we meet with them. Bring up the wayfinding signs. He works at council, so I don't know if she did that or not.
It was discussed, yeah.
It was discussed? Okay. Well, maybe get a date. Something good.
But the guys that were here for the text talk don't approve that by any means. So, but it does give the message out. They're working on it.
Yeah.
Okay, the rules of...
They're government. We don't look at it. Sorry.
What is it with these people? Anyway. All right, well, uh, I'll, I think that just about covers everything. Item number 11 is a motion to adjourn unless we have any others.
Does anybody else have?
Yeah, I was asking. I, I didn't know. I didn't, everybody got locked, y'all. Are we okay?
Well, you didn't give us a chance. You haven't stopped talking yet.
You go. I promise, where did I get him out of here?
I don't have anything for the agenda, but those of us that were here and got to see the mugs with the, with the logos on them, I don't, have you got to see them? Jeff did an absolutely amazing job. I just want to give kudos. They looked fantastic.
The logos?
Yeah, he did some, some coffee cups with some logos.
Woo-hoo! Well, you would have gotten one last night.
Some of us, some of us won. I didn't have a lot.
Yeah, you work for us. You can ask Ruby or Brent. They got the ones where the people didn't show up.
They get the broken one.
Yeah. You don't show up, you don't pay off. That's the way it is. What do you think? Are you wanting to see about maybe having us pick up some more for the city or?
I think, you know, we should, even if we just do a sample product to our, to the neighbor, to, to the businesses downtown and say, hey, are you interested in selling this? I think they would be.
I think that's a great idea. Well, Ms. Carol's already put in an order for four, five, six, we don't know how many, and you asked for some. I was thinking I would give a Stephanie and we'd put an order in for maybe 50 of them or whatever and get them out to all the businesses.
I really think they'd, they'd be interested in selling.
Okay. Start by something. Sell them here.
Is that, that's not an agenda item though, right? I mean, we, we got buzzers for stuff like that.
Yes, you have a budget for stuff like that.
Okay, all right, we're good.
So, you know, on a future agenda item, would you want that?
Yes, since we're going out for stakeholders anyway, it might be a good way to go in and say, hey, we...
Show up with a gift.
Yeah, agree. Okay. Um, is anything else?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, Casey. I didn't, I didn't mean to ostracize you there. Carol, I know you always have something.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm good.
Everybody's okay, right? All right. Now, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So, it's been motioned by Mr. Olson that we adjourn the meeting and it's been seconded by Ryan and, and Dan for that matter. Uh, it's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes carry. It means adjourn. Oh, and the time is, I get so excited after the, um, six forty-nine, eight?
Thank you.
Sorry.
I can't see the clock from here.
We need one of those digital clocks.